This regular meeting and tax rate public hearing of Lone Star College System Board of Trustees is now called to order at 10:30. I will lead us in the pledge of allegiance this morning if everyone will please stand.
I pledge allegiance.
Thank you very much. I'll do a roll call vote. Board members, if you're present, please say here or present. Miriam Saldivar is on her way. She'll be here shortly. Trustee Wilson. Thank you. Trustee Broussard, trustee Stoma, trustee Mesa.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Mario.
Present.
Thank you. Trustee Vote, trustee Kane.
Present.
We do, and myself, Mike Sullivan, present. We do have a quorum. Chancellor Castillo, has notice of this meeting been posted?
Chairman, I certify that the notice of this meeting has been posted in accordance with the law.
Thank you. I now convene the tax rate public hearing at 10:31 a.m. Ms. Barnett, has anyone signed up to offer a public comment?
We do not have any public comments for the tax rate public hearing.
Thank you, Ms. Barnett. Having no speakers who have signed up to speak this morning, we will move on to our next item. Presentation of the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed tax rate. Dr. Vian, if you'll please come forward and make your presentation of the fiscal year 2025-2026 proposed tax rate.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Good morning, Chair, Board of Trustees, Chancellor. So taking a look at the tax year 2025, fiscal year or budget year 2026 proposed tax rate, you can see in front of you that we are recommending an MNO rate of 0.0785 for the MNO. And for interest and sinking, we are recommending 0.0275 for a total tax rate of 0.1060. Sorry, the slides are not cooperating with me. When we're looking at a historical tax rate, I always want to make sure that we put this in front of the board as well as the community so they can take a look at not only Lone Star's 15-year historical average when it relates to property taxes, but also the state's average. And as you can see, we are far below the typical average and we've been a good consumer of making sure, good steward, I should say, of ensuring that we keep the tax rate at just the level that we need to support the system, but being respective and conscious of the taxpayers. And so as you can see, the rate that we are proposing is a reduction from the 0.1076 down to 0.1060 per hundred dollar valuation for the upcoming fiscal year. For the board's information, the lower tax rate to those 1076 to 1060 is an increase in our maintenance and operations rate of the tax rate, going from 757 to 785. And then we're also doing a decrease on the interest and sinking portion of the tax rate, or what we call our debt service rate. So the interest and sinking is only used to pay down our debt or obligations, while the maintenance and operation is used to fund the operations of the college. So the interest and sinking rate will actually be decreasing from 0319 to 0275. And so this does include to pay off an additional $30 million in debt defeesence should the proposed rate move forward. Just wanted to highlight some legislative requirements related to the proposed tax rate as well as the voter approval rate. And so again, what we're proposing is the point 1060 or 3.11% above the NNR for the upcoming fiscal year. Just provided a rough timetable for the board, just to remind that this is a timetable of what we are required to do legislatively to stay within our proposal. And so we have until Friday, October 31st to approve, or the deadline to approve the adopted tax rate. I'm happy to answer any questions on behalf of the board or any questions that may be present.
Thank you, Dr. Vian. Trustees, any questions? Let the record show trustee Vote is joined us. Good morning, trustee Vote. Any questions? Trustee Wilson, thank you. Trustee Mario, trustee Kane, trustee Mesa. No questions for me. Is that the end of your presentation?
Yes, sir, it is.
Thank you very much. Good job and congratulate your team also, please.
Thank you, sir.
All right. Now, I am required to announce the date, time, and place at which the board will vote on the proposed tax rate. It will be Thursday, October 2nd, 2025, during the financial, that's the date, the time, during the financial reports and considerations portion of this meeting's agenda, place. Lone Star College University Park, Commons Ground Hall, 20515 Texas Highway 249, Houston, Texas, 77070. With no further business to discuss, the tax rate public hearing is now adjourned at 10:36 a.m. I now convene the regular meeting at 10:36 a.m. Please let the record reflect that a quorum remains present. One, two, three, four, five, six. Ms. Barnett, has anyone signed up to offer a public comment?
Yes, we have Dr. John Bergdoff in person.
Thank you, Dr. Bergdoff. If you would head to the podium, please. In accordance with board policy, each speaker is allowed to speak for up to five minutes. There's a timer on the podium with lights. When the light turns red, your time has expired.
Great. Thank you very much, Chair Sullivan.
Yes.
Good morning. I am Dr. John Bergduff, President of the American Federation of Teachers at Lone Star College, and thank you so much for the privilege of speaking with you all this morning. I frequently catch myself wondering what people 200 years from now will think about those of us living today. 200 years ago, the economy of this country was largely based on the premise that it was okay for one race of people to literally own another race of people. We look back on those times and we marvel that a society could embrace a concept that is, at the same time, so profoundly insane and so profoundly evil. What scares me is that so many of those who agreed with, or at least acquiesced to this practice, were by every measure of society at that time, good people. People who loved their children, who went to church on Sunday, who spoke about a free country. And yet, they had this glaring ethical blind spot that far too few people seemed to perceive. Or if they did, it was thought it was just the way things are. So what could you do? Those who spoke out against this practice were thought of as extremists, radicals, un-American. What blind spots do we have, those of us who believe we are good people, that I personally have, that people 200 years from now will look back at and marvel that we could embrace such evil? The list, I fear, is a long one and getting longer. One item that I am rather certain will be on this list is that we tolerate a system in which people can toil for 40, 60, or 80 hours a week at hard but honest work and not be able to make enough money to feed their children, to pay their bills, to obtain needed health care, to live in a safe and comfortable home. Those who question the ethics of such a system are thought of as extremists, radicals, un-American. And so the practice continues, except when it doesn't. When an individual or a group or a community college decides to do something to make things better, at least for the corner of the world that they can influence. It makes me immensely proud that Lone Star College has committed to the long-term goal of making sure every person who works for this system is earning a living wage. I am proud of our chancellor for setting this goal. I am proud of the board for funding a budget that moves us forward as quickly as we can because it will cost a lot of money. I am proud of my colleagues for expressing their support for our lowest-paid employees and not turning to the small and dark place of what's in it for me. I want to close by reading from a post that our chancellor, Mario Castillo, posted on LinkedIn on September 14th as he explained this vision. So I quote, "I challenge my colleagues to start digging deep so that everyone who works at our institution full-time can earn a living wage. And so while every employee at our institution got a 3% across-the-board increase on September 1, by December 1, the bottom-earning 500 employees will see an additional increase of at least 5% as we march toward a living wage for everyone at my institution, with some seeing several thousands more a year in their salaries. It will test us. It will be hard. But imagine the college we will build where no one makes below a livable wage in our region. We are not there yet, but we are one step closer. And when at work, I sent out an email explaining this new priority to every single one of my colleagues, around 8,000 people. Well, my colleagues, especially the ones that will not directly benefit, prove to me that we do work at a great place to work where how we treat our most vulnerable employees matters. And where there are many, and where many are willing to hurt a little so that fewer and fewer don't hurt a lot." End of quotation from the chancellor. "Let's do this thing. Thank you for your time and your kind attention."
Thank you, sir. Let the record reflect that trustee Stoma joined the meeting at 10:39 a.m. Ms. Barnett, just to confirm, are there any additional public speakers?
We have no more public speakers, sir.
Okay. Thank you very much. Now that we have heard from all speakers, we'll move on to our next item. It is time for approval of the minutes of the September 4th, 2025 regular meeting and September 17th, 2025 special meeting. Are there any corrections to the minutes? Hearing none, there being no corrections, so I hear a motion to approve the minutes. Have a motion by trustee Wilson. Do I have a second?
Second.
A second. Who is that? Trustee Mario. Thank you. Second by trustee Mario. Will now take a vote. Trustee Saldivar is absent. Trustee Wilson? Thank you. Trustee Wilson, trustee Broussard absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Thank you. Trustee Mesa?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Mario?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Vote?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Kane?
Yes.
Thank you. Trustee Sullivan, vote yes as well. The motion passes and the minutes are approved. Special reports and announcements. Chancellor Castillo, do you have any special reports or announcements?
I do, Chairman. Thank you. I'm going to start with, we did have on past events, we had Dr. Carlos Morales's welcome reception here in this very room, actually, September 8th. We had a couple of trustees there. Thank you for attending. Trustee Kane and trustee Mario, correct? All right. My memory is not as good as it once was, so I want to make sure. All right. So thank you for attending. That was a great event. Welcome again to Dr. Morales with LSC Online. We also had Watts at Cy Fair on September 12th from 9:30 to 11:00. And then upcoming, on October 10th, we have Watts here, actually, in this very room with University Park from 9:30 to 11:00. And then, obviously, I also want to address, this week, we had an explosive device threat here at Lone Star College University Park, and the board's been briefed. It's been all over the news. But I did want to take a moment to commend really the entire institution, from chancellor's cabinet to the presidents to the vice chancellors, Ms. Molina, who acts as our emergency management person at the cabinet level, to Chief Willingham, who's sitting back there, the chief of the police department, Harris County Sheriff's Office, their bomb squad was instrumental in helping us sort of clear every floor. At the end of the day, it ended up being nothing, but we take every threat very seriously at this institution. And so just wanted to, again, publicly thank everyone that was involved in that, from communications to the police department, to safety and security, to the operational folks. It's also massive inconvenience, as you can imagine, having to cancel things, schedule things. And I'll tell you, I was out there just to give you a wide range of the questions that I was getting from parents that were picking up their kids from high school, you know. You can imagine, get a text message if something happens at your kid's school and you show up and you're terrified. And so I got some very serious questions. Employees also very concerned. And then you have the random questions, right? And so I had a random question from a student that was like, hey, I was at the cafeteria and I had ordered my food. Am I going to get my money back? Because I didn't get the food. So yes, we gave all those folks refunds. So if you didn't get your food, we gave you a refund. And even that, right? We also paid the part-time employees because Dr. Dempsey and I decided to close down both buildings 11 and 12 and really all of Lone Star College University Park and send everyone home for the day. We also paid our part-time employees because, again, consistent with the standards here at Lone Star, we want to make sure that our most vulnerable employees don't suffer financial consequences for matters outside of their control. And so we made sure that we paid those part-time employees as well for their scheduled hours. And so it was unfortunate. It was all over the news, national news, in fact. As the board is aware, there was at least, I think, 10 such threats on that same day across the country. And so it sounds like we were one of the first ones up that morning. Prayer of you was about an hour later. And again, just want to thank everyone. We take those things really, really seriously. We try to communicate as much as we can. Like everything else we do at this institution, the next time we intend to do it better. And so there was a few items that we got feedback on that we're going to improve from messaging to communication to who gets to go home. And so we're going to do an after-action report on all of that. But I did want to share with the board that, obviously, we had that incident. It was very unfortunate, but as far as those things are concerned, it ended about as well as it could end in those kind of situations. So moving on to something a little bit brighter. So I want to, I do want to highlight that once again, and it's kind of become the standard now, which is why we don't really celebrate. We had record enrollments, 97,000 students. But what I really want to focus on during this is how we're enrolling students, right? We're retaining. We've doubled the amount of FTIC retention from last year, which was essentially a doubling of the year before. So we're not just enrolling new students, we're holding on to the ones we have, which, as I've explained to the board, the entire time that I've been chancellor in all other industries, it's much cheaper to keep a customer than it is to get a new customer. And for the record, our students are not customers, because I know the faculty. I'm looking over there. They're not customers. They are learners on a joint mission to better themselves through critical thinking skills and education, not customers. But from the retention standpoint, it is sort of the same dynamic. It's a lot more expensive to have a new student come in, both to the student and to the institution, have them start something that they don't finish. And so I wanted to call up Dr. Napolis. Dr. Napolis, will you come up here? I wanted, we just received notice of a new award. I think either today or yesterday, they're all starting to fuse together. But I wanted to, I always like that the person that knows the most about the thing gets to talk about the thing. So, Dr. Napolis, go ahead, sir.
Thank you, Chancellor. Chair Sullivan, members of the board. Each year, the Texas Higher Education Coordinating Board shines a spotlight on colleges and universities across the state. Through the STAR Awards, they recognize institutions that are moving Texas forward under the vision of building a talent-strong Texas. The 2025 theme is "From Classroom to Career: A Future-Ready Texas" and the awards honor transformative work in student success, workforce partnerships, and innovation. On August 21st, Chancellor Castillo wrote in support of our application for the student success category, noting Lone Star College's extensive efforts to improve completion and persistence, and stating in that application, Lone Star College stands among the most deserving institutions for this honor. The coordinating board agrees. On September 30th, we received notice from Dr. Brandon Griggs, Assistant Commissioner for College and Career Advising, congratulating Lone Star College as one of six colleges and universities in Texas selected for the 2025 STAR Award. We were honored in the student success category for our measurable progress in helping students persist, complete credentials, and move toward their career goals. Some of this work started several years ago with GAD Pathways, Excellence in Academic Advising, and the Gardner Institute Projects. And now we are redefining, refining, and coming up with new ways to improve this. Through the hard work and determination of system-wide faculty, staff, administrators, some of the noteworthy outcomes of that work include the implementation of reverse transfer, aut undergrad, early alert, bringing programs down to 60 hours to reduce time credits to degree, and of course, the implementation of the Care for Completion work. As Chancellor Castillo mentioned in his letter of support, these achievements reflect the hard work and dedication of our faculty, staff, and leadership teams, as well as the strength of our students. They also reflect a culture of continuous improvement where we use data dashboards, technology, professional development, and holistic supports to remove barriers, close equity gaps, and keep students on track. Finally, I want to acknowledge Associate Vice Chancellor Jamie Posey and her team for their outstanding work in gathering the data and preparing the award submission. Thank you.
That's, that's all I have, Chairman, unless you guys have questions for Dr. Napolis.
Any questions, board members? No questions. Good job, sir. Thank you. Next item is chancellor's cabinet. Lone Star College North Harris, President Benny Lambert will come forward to make a presentation.
Good morning, Chair. Chancellor, Board of Trustees. Privilege and a pleasure for me to stand before you. I have 10 minutes. I know that. And it's hard for me. Going to be talking about the Academy for Lifelong Learning. And literally want to start it this way, the beginning. I initially thought that North Harris started everything. I've got news for you. Lifelong Learning and the academy initially was started by LSC Montgomery, fall 2000, followed by Kingwood, spring 2004. And North Harris was third at 2004, so was Cy Fair at 2004, and Tomball right at 2005, all right together. The other two institutions, LSC University Park, 2014, and LSC Houston North, 2019. That's the framework that we're going to go from. I want to go fast of our top seven. And we're going to make it happen literally right now. Back this back one second. Special reports. Here we go. Okay. This is it right here. I'm going to first tell you about LSC Montgomery, some interesting pieces. The, really, the celebration of longevity and community. Down in my right-hand corner, your left-hand corner, are ladies and gentlemen and men in red. That's a group, they call themselves the Lone Star Strummers, and it's a mountain dulcimer group that has been playing for the last two decades. They've been around for, so instead of, I think they're just taking a class, they're actually become a fixture in the community of Montgomery and that area, volunteering their talents around December at the mall and at senior citizens. The bottom line, that's beautiful music. It's bluegrass and it looks like a guitar. Secondly, one of the touching things about the people in Montgomery, they have a lady by the name of Ms. Gross, and she was involved in the all bead weaving class. Our instructor, Andrea Anderson, helped her develop some skills, skills such that she was invited to be a part of the Daughters of the American Revolution contest, whereby she won literally a first prize nationally. She presented her work in Washington, D.C., and in Austin, Texas. Literally serious about what they're doing. Also, a picture of the all is the lady in yellow right there, Myra Anderson. She's 90 years young, and she's a Puerto Rican and New Yorker that is, believe it or not, at Montgomery College. And literally what she's been doing is using her crochet and her bead And literally what she's been doing is using her crochet and her beads, taking quilts, doing this, doing that. The bottom line, 90 years young and still making a difference in the next level of learning. Speaking of the next level of learning, Kingwood College. Hello Chair Sullivan. The need for community, uh, there was a lady, uh, her name was Jacqueline in 2004, that's when they started. She moved to Kingwood to see her closer to her family. And she actually called the all office and she was calling to ask about uh, not necessarily what classes they had. Uh, but she was lonely, uh, and she wanted to volunteer. And she did volunteer and in essence, that was her way to connect herself to the community. She had a uh, Spanish background, she had a French background, she was a tour guide in Europe, she was an avid knitter and crocheter. I'm seeing something going here. And literally, she didn't just enroll here, she was a, a welcome, welcome, welcome person on behalf of all. She spent seven years teaching her craft. And literally her story is uh, in a nutshell, what all is about. It offers a lifetime, a lifeline, uh, a platform for sharing prizes, experiences, welcoming community that turns loneliness into friendships. Key piece, that's Kingwood. And then uh, the LSC North Harris Group, uh, an entrepreneurial success uh, deals with a couple of faculty uh, who came to a small business conference uh, not long ago, as a matter of fact. Uh, and they invented to a new game called Klash, K L triple A H, that's the way it's pronounced, uh, S H. And what they in fact did, it was a game that dealt with chess, checkers and go. And they use the North Harris Student Chess Club as baiter testers. In a nutshell, uh, it came out as a, a trademark game in which uh, all the members on Wednesday's mornings uh, take advantage of that. And the professor, uh, Professor Yawanda literally said, this is how we can get people to flourish and make great ideas move forward. And the other quick piece is about the community building. Uh, we have a, there's a, a garden initiative uh, called Community Garden for All Members, partnering with the Biology Department, uh, and their gardening for pollinators instructor. Uh, in a nutshell, that together, we are already seeing and believing and knowing we're going to have growing vegetables this fall. But this is, incident is not about gardening, it's really about access. And one of the members who was a part of this and super excited, she stated that uh, she was so excited about it because she's lived in an apartment all her life and she's never had a garden to play in. That says a lot about the communities we all serve. Uh, all of us are in communities where we're serving. And also about that picture, uh, there's a bus there and that is uh, uh, County Commissioner Rodney Ellis's bus. Uh, we had about 60 folks uh, there a couple of weeks ago uh, to get some things related to health and wellness. Uh, Alzheimer's, dementia, you name it. Uh, and they were just so glad to be on our campus. In addition, we had a lot of books left over uh, that faculty and folks from the library wanted to quote unquote giveaway. And many of them took advantage of that. They had an experience, uh, they were excited about and they went back and shared with Commissioner Ellis. Going to Tomball. There we go, right there. That's not Tomball. That's them right there, but I'll be back in a moment. Uh, I will be back in a moment, I guarantee you. Uh, in a nutshell, uh, the sense of community uh, really is shown at Tomball. Uh, they have uh, an event called First Fridays uh, of the month. And I had an opportunity to see how they cultivate community. Uh, they're surrounded by people who love Tomball and having the Beckendorf Center, it's amazing what happens when uh, that is utilized. Founded by a board member, uh, supported by he and his wife, uh, Mr. Beckendorf, a dairyman. Uh, the chamber, the greater Tomball Area Chamber Commerce happens on the College of Tomball College. And that place is so wrapped around what the college is about, uh, what they do, that they're a picture of support, a big picture of support. Cy Fair that you saw earlier that I moved away from, guess what, we're back there right now. And here's one of the coolest things uh, about the Cy Fair piece. There's a lady by the name, and she's sitting right there on the bottom. Uh, her name is Bonnie Johnson, she's 80 years young and she started a class called Stepping Out. Uh, and we believe this to be the single longest running all class in all of Lone Star. And sitting next to her is her husband there, uh, he was, he was uh, quite a hoot. Uh, what it says uh, on his shirt is exercise. I thought you said extra fries. I do like that one myself. Uh, what all members do is they, they mentor, they bring friends, they're active participants. They support and love the community of the Lone Star Colleges. One person said, uh, all has sharpened my mind and enriched my lives in so many ways. They can call it a fantastic opportunity to meet people, learn new things and get information to navigate the challenges seniors face, fulfill the needs of intellectual stimulation and conversation and providing a chance to engage with younger generations. Put a period right there. Uh, and lastly, here's a person I have to tell you about uh, from Cy Fair. Uh, in a nutshell, she's the, the same person who brought stepping out, uh, brought uh, the, they're running, they're runners, they're walkers. They have about six to 12 people in the group and literally rain or shine. Uh, when the gates open on that particular day, they're out doing just that. And in doing so, they were walking and they saw a young lady as the, as the 80, 80, 80 year young uh, Bonnie Johnson says. She said, in a nutshell, uh, the young lady was crying and she sat down just to give her a hug. And she said for her and for the young lady, it was one of the best feelings she'd ever been a part of. And uh, we're right here, right now, we're at. And I want to say a, a piece about Tomball, the gentleman in the picture there uh, was one of the coordinators. That's uh, Dr. Roy Lazenby, one of the founding uh, presidents of, of Tomball uh, right there. And upon retiring as president, he was uh, an all coordinator, uh, leader for a, a few years thereafter. Uh, we're at LSC University Park right now. Quickly Nancy Crawl, she's a, was an all program coordinator. Uh, she was faculty member at, at Tomball, at North Harris, at Kingwood. Uh, she also was a, was a, a staunch member of the League of Women Voters of Houston. Uh, Voter Services, uh, trustee Mesa, I know you would like that when, love that. The bottom line is uh, she really did so much for uh, the all program. Uh, and next to it is a book, we'll see in a moment. Uh, and I, it slides me uh, to LSC Houston North. Uh, LSC Houston North, uh, in a nutshell, this is what a lady by the name of Kathy Anderson said uh, about this experience, taking a class for a second time. She had a teacher that was great, but then she met Dr. Pinky exclaimed, I've never had a teacher like Dr. Pinky. He truly looked forward to coming every week. The feeling of belonging is so strong that when they didn't have class, Kathy admitted. Show you a picture Kathy, that's her on the red, on the right, my right, your left, that's, that's her. And this is what she said, I felt lost and found myself just fussing with my husband. The bottom line is I miss engaging with others and that gave me the opportunity. And lastly, Greg Humes. My grandson is now enrolled at Lone Star and I've even encouraged my wife to participate in the program. So much of what is happening are people's grandparents, loved ones, uh, wanting to be a part of the success of their sons and daughters or grandchildren. The bottom line is all and the people of all, they're right back here. If you would, just stand up and, and they're more than you think, I'm telling you right now. Uh, yes, there they are. And just the, the, the care and uh, the decency and the love they show for uh, our seniors. And we have them classified in there as 50 or over, so man, that's an early senior. The bottom line is, I told you about an 80 year older and I told you about a 90 year younger. The bottom line is uh, can't say enough about uh, having the opportunity uh, to speak on behalf of all in the Academy of Long Learning Group. Because uh, if we all keep living, uh, it'll be an option for us if we'd like. Uh, when people say they came to this place because they were looking uh, for a community, looking for new friends. Uh, this is the place, Lone Star College. Thank you, thank you, ladies and gentlemen, thank you very much. As I walk away, there is inside your, your packet, the all menu, for lack of a better word. Uh, on page 36, they talk about how to uh, handle chickens in your backyard. Eggs are going up, uh, that's amazing. And next to that page is talking about genealogy. And I'm telling you right now, I've gotten some incredible reviews about both of those. People having chickens probably in Dr. Kane's area and doing well. The bottom line is, thank you so much for coming up creative ideas and thank you very much for me having the opportunity to do this.
Stand by Dr. If you don't mind, any questions, trustee Mario, any questions, yes, sir.
I want to share something. I have an uncle, uh, my dad's youngest brother, and I see Frank over there, you know him, uh, my uncle. Um, about 10 years ago, he moved up to uh, to Tomball and I was worried that, you know, I would read about how uh, 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 older adults have experienced loneliness and, you know, not enough activities once you move out, especially in rural suburbs there. So I visit with him often, you know, so I have lunch with him and, you know, um, I enjoy hanging out with him. But this recent, last time, I told, I know, I want to make sure I can keep that connection and, and he canceled my next appointment because he's, he's attending that program. He's in, in that program in Tomball and he loves it. He loves it and you know, that kind of warmed my heart, I'm thinking, oh wow, at least he's going to be fine, he doesn't need me. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you trustee Mario, trustee Kane.
Just to uh, second the comments that Dr. Lambert made, I've been taking courses in the all program now for about, about eight years. Sometimes online, sometimes in person, and I can't say enough good things about that program. The, the, the one thing that really stands out um, is the fact that in that program, you can take an unlimited number of courses over two semesters for $25. And I don't know where else you can take that number of courses for that price and get the quality that you have. So it's, it's just a wonderful program. So I want to thank everybody that's been involved in that program over the years.
Thank you, Dr. Kane, appreciate those comments, trustee Mesa. Thank you trustee, uh, Saldivar.
Yes, just a few comments Chairman, I just want to echo uh, Dr. Kane's comment on that. Thank you to all the volunteers and everyone at Life Learning. Um, my parents used to join that a couple of years ago, obviously they don't do that anymore. They just, their health prohibits them for that, but they really did enjoy it. Every time they came home and I was able to talk to them, they, they enjoyed every class and, and they always looked forward to attending back the next day. So thank you so much for what, what y'all do.
Thank you trustee Saldivar, trustee Bo, any comments? Thank you trustee Wilson, thank you, thank you very much, Dr. Lambert.
Thank you.
Next item, the faculty representative, professor, Professor Welsh, please proceed to the podium for your presentation. Good morning.
Let me try this. All right, thank you. Good morning Chair Sullivan, members of the board, Chancellor Castillo. I'm Professor Welsh of Lone Star College North Harris. And today I'd like to share a bit about the amazing work being done through our sabbatical program and its impact on students and the institution. Sabbaticals provide faculty with structured time away from typical duties to engage in an approved project that enhances curriculum and teaching excellence, institutional advancement and student experience and success. I was recently able to get a broad look at the projects and outcomes of the sabbatical program at Lone Star College through a questionnaire that I sent out to faculty at the start of the semester. 25 faculty from across the system who received sabbaticals between 2017 and this academic year replied. Overwhelmingly, their responses cited as the most valuable feature of the sabbatical. What Matthew Becker so succinctly stated when he wrote, sabbaticals give faculty the gift of time. And in return, our students, our college gain innovation, quality and excellence. So the gift of time, the gift of time for activities and projects that require deep and sustained thought and some variation of research, writing, fieldwork, travel or retooling in response to emerging technological or pedagogical advancements, disciplinary developments and our students' needs. In fact, these time, these types of time intensive activities are often not possible to any great extent during a normal semester. Yet many faculty have ideas that if we had time, we would love to research and build into our course structures or college experience for students. And sometimes technological or pedagogical advances occur so quickly that we absolutely need those among us who can to take the lead, become experts on a topic quickly and develop professional development opportunities that parse out the best practices and solutions relevant to the central component of our jobs, which is of course, the art and science of teaching and learning. So several dominant themes stood out as I was exploring the sabbatical projects. Pedagog- pedagogical innovation, community connection, fac- faculty excellence, student enrichment and institutional advancement. And I'd like to highlight a handful of actual Lone Star College sabbatical projects that illustrate each theme. The first pedagogical innovation, this stood out as a major outcome of nearly all sabbaticals. Rob Coyle, history professor at Cy Fair, for example, built a virtual travel module for his modern European history course, making global exploration more accessible to a broader range of students. And two of our English professors, Angela Gant of North Harris and Erin Ramp at LSC Online, use their sabbaticals to independently explore AI as a tool for the improvement of student writing with the outcomes of enhancing curriculum design and creating a classroom ready module on AI and writing to share with their colleagues. Examples of sabbaticals that were used to build connections with community include LSC Montgomery Biology Professor Anitha Iyer's sabbatical wherein she partnered with Lake Creek Greenway Preserve doing fieldwork of collecting and identifying specimens to create a digital mushroom archive. doing fieldwork of collecting and identifying specimens to create a digital mushroom archive, which in turn led to new classroom activities about ecology and bioremediation. LSE SciFair's Geography Professor Buck Buchanan used his sabbatical to do fieldwork and educational outreach projects, including as a guest lecturer and water quality volunteer at various U.S. National Marine Sanctuaries he partnered with through NOAA. And through this work, he gained practical sustainability knowledge that he could bring back, back to our students. For the next theme, Faculty Excellence, I would like to highlight the work of Gloria Maristany, who teaches EDUC 1300 for Tomball and who incorporated her sabbatical research into the Science of Happiness, uh, into her classes with a Science of Well-being module, improving students' reported subjective experiences of well-being and success. And Matthew Keyworth, History Professor at University Park, developed as an alternative to traditional exams, an immersive oral interviewing activity where students actually practice historical methodology by interviewing family members, allowing students to place their own family story into the wider scope of U.S. history. Institutional advancement. While all of the projects move the institution forward, two are salient in regard to a focus on the whole institution. Kingwood Math Professor Stephanie Andrews used her sabbatical to develop core requisites for non-major math courses, allowing her to lead the system in the transition to a state-mandated core requisite math model. And Montgomery Government Professor Dominic Begon used his sabbatical to research and share his findings on the effects and insights learned from Hurricane Harvey's impact on Lone Star College, Kingwood. So we can see how all of these sabbatical projects directly tie into LSE institutional goals. Advancing, for example, the Chancellor's G2 and G3 goals of academic program quality and student success, and also leadership and culture. They also support Lone Star College's faculty qualities of excellence, of being student-invested, a content expert, pedagogically excellent, and institutionally dedicated. Finally, Student Enrichment. Fine Arts Professor Julie DeVries at LSE North Harris rebuilt her Drawing 2 curriculum around the emerging student interest in graphic novels, character design, and visual narratives. And this subsequently resulted in North Harris's first zine fest where students had the opportunity to display and sell their own creative works. And Political Science Professor John Thies of Kingwood used his sabbatical to develop the first long-term study abroad experience, which was subsequently enjoyed by the inaugural 24 Lone Star College students and will continue to be run through the LSE Honors and International Studies Program in coordination with Korea's Dangkook University. Perhaps my favorite part of giving this presentation is this next part, Student Voices. Several faculty highlighted student voices, which really provides an inside view of the impact of the Lone Star College Sabbatical Program um, and its impact on students. And I'd like to share too. Julie DeVries wrote about the redesign of her Drawing 2 course. "I knew I had made the right choice to develop this class when, at the end of the semester, I was helping one of my students complete her Best of Zine. She beamed and said, 'I can't believe I actually did this. I've always wanted to make comics, but I was never able to. I'm so proud of myself.'" And Rob Coyle, who created the virtual Study Abroad module for his Modern European History course, shared feedback he received from one of his students. He wrote, "One student emailed me at the end of a course and told me he had done something foolish with a car and was now quadriplegic. But he wanted to thank me because I took him on Study Abroad." So these product, projects reveal not only the talent and creativity of my colleagues, but also the significant impacts that sabbaticals add to the excellence of Lone Star College. Sabbaticals give the gift of time and the returns are clear. And faculty thank you. Oh. Faculty want to thank you and ask for your continued support of sabbaticals as an investment in the future of Lone Star College. An investment that pays back in innovation, excellence, and above all, the success and enrichment of the students we serve. Thank you.
Thank you, Professor Welsh. Uh, let me poll board members and see if they have any questions. We'll go virtually real quick. Trustee Stoma, do you have any questions?
No.
Thank you. Trustee Voe. Thank you, Trustee Wilson.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Maria. Trustee Kane?
Ju- just a great presentation and thank you so much for sharing that information. I totally support, uh, the sabbatical program.
Thank you.
Trustee Mesa?
Uh, I'd like to echo my colleagues and say thank you for the presentation, for sharing this information with us. I did have a quick question. I mean, I think these sabbaticals are, are great for our, uh, faculty members and it's true, you know, it's hard to get a lot of things done throughout the semester and especially, I'm sure they have, uh, projects that they'd like to work on and, you know, obviously they do a lot of great things and bring a lot of great things back to the college. Um, I just want to make sure and I hope this is the case, that they are, continue to be compensated during the sabbatical and during their projects.
That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Saldivar?
Thank you for the presentation. I really enjoyed it. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Thank you. Chancellor, any comments? Thank you. Thank you, Professor. Board members, uh, we'll now move to next section, uh, the agenda trustees. Do you have any special reports or announcements? I'll go virtually. Trustee Stoma?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Trustee Maria?
Yes, I, I wanted to report out, uh, you know, thanks to the chancellor. Lone Star College is, uh, now again a valuable member of the Community College Association of College Trustees. And on September 11th and from the 13th, 12th, okay. Trustee Wilson and I attended their signature event in Austin, which is their annual, annual conference. Uh, so just wanted to kind of report that, um, it was very valuable. A lot of critical insights, meaningful learning, connections and collaborations, um, with trustees from all over the state. I know Trustee Wilson and I kind of had a chance to, um, listen to some, uh, trustees been there for decades, right? And, and other, other parts of the state. It is Texas, so we kind of relate to, to the challenges that we're facing and, and the ideas. So I really enjoyed that part of it. Um, and of course I got to, we also get to share with others our successes at Lone Star College and which we are very proud of. Um, much of the focus was on practical governance level strategies and best practices that are known to strengthen, uh, Texas community colleges across Texas. Again, particularly in light of, uh, House Bill Eight. The good news is that, you know, there's been so much change and so much, um, everybody shares, uh, you know, the, I guess, having overcome or worked through the challenges of House Bill Eight. And, and the good news is that, um, it's coming together, guys. That, uh, that, that some of the resources they provide are, are excellent. And I'm eager to share with my colleagues some, some of the materials, some of the information. One in particular is, um, that I encourage, that they encourage to, we all, uh, take, take a look at it, are data-informed, data-informed governance learning modules, which is a series designed to help trustees strengthen its oversight and decision-making responsibilities. You know, I had a chance to, to, to listen to those. It's, um, it's about six, five to 10 minutes each module. It's about 10 or 11. And really, really gets to the crux of, of what we're doing here and, and, and it gives you case studies or also, um, fictional school colleges, you know, so, uh, and how they will deal with each other's challenges or each other's questions that came up. So, um, I look forward to kind of sharing with you guys more information about that. And I know, um, I know Trustee Wilson also might have some, some insight as well. Thanks.
Thank you, Trustee Kane. Thank you, Trustee Mesa?
Yes, I, uh, I'd like to, uh, let everybody know, if y'all aren't aware, and hopefully many of y'all are, uh, as a public service announcement. Uh, this coming Monday, October 6th, is the last day to register to vote in time for this year's election. Um, I'm very, uh, involved in this, as Dr. Lambert mentioned earlier in his presentation. I mean, this is my profession. And so I just wanted to remind everybody, if y'all haven't checked your registration, encourage you to check your registration. If y'all have moved recently, encourage you to update your voter registration before that Monday, October 6th. Uh, another reminder, in Texas, you actually cannot register to vote online. A lot of people, uh, in some cases, young people, but in many cases, people of any age, uh, get confused by that and they think that they've registered online when, in fact, they have to print out the application and mail it and get a stamp and do all of that extra work. Um, and so I also want to, uh, take this chance to highlight, uh, the amazing work that our Engage the Electoral, uh, program is, is running. And I've, uh, met and talked to a few students, uh, throughout this year and, uh, they've, uh, shared their experience, their positive experience through this Engage the Electoral program. And I know we have a lot of great, uh, faculty and, and presidents that support that. Um, and then the last thing too is if y'all didn't know what y'all are voting on this year, it's going to be 17 propositions or changes to the state constitution. Uh, many school boards are being, uh, selected this year. And we even have, uh, a special election for, uh, City of Houston at Large, Position 4, and, um, Congressional District 18. And so, um, if anybody has any questions, further questions, I'd be happy to assist. And I'm sure that our, uh, many staff members and presidents and faculty would also be happy to assist with that. And so just a reminder again, please, uh, don't forget to register to vote. If y'all have any friends, families, network, uh, people in your network, uh, church members, you know, fellow employees, your neighbors, please remind them as well so that everybody can participate in these elections. Uh, there's very low turnout in these, uh, off-year elections, but they're just as important, if not more important, because of, uh, their local nature. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Trustee Mesa, and just an additional comment, if you don't mind, you mentioned the state constitutional amendments. If you would, maybe mention that even though someone may not have a local jurisdictional race to vote on, every registered Texan can vote.
Yeah, and I thought you were going to ask me to, meant to tell you what all 17 works. I don't know those. I don't have those memorized. Uh, but thank you, Chair Sullivan, for that reminder. Yeah, even if you don't have a local election, if you're not in the city of Houston in District 18 or in a school board that's having an election, everybody in Texas has a chance to either vote yes or no on changes to our state constitution, which is the law that governs our state. And so everybody, uh, has that direct effect on, uh, these laws that are going to affect us. Thank you, Chair.
Yes, sir. Thank you. Appreciate it. Uh, Trustee Saldivar?
Yes, sir. Thank you. I have two things. One, I would like to thank the student ambassadors, uh, for volunteering their time to join us, to walk with us, to chat with us while we're here, making sure that we get here on time. So thank you so much. And then the other comment is, uh, on social media, I found out that Lone Star College Houston North has, uh, the U.S. Latinos and Latinas in World War II exhibition. Um, I'll look forward to, uh, attending that one. And it's at Houston North Greensport location, September 2nd through October 31st. Uh, obviously, this is in honor of all our men and women in, in uniform, but as well in, in honor of, uh, Latino History Month. So again, it's Images of Valor, uh, it's the U.S. Latinos and Latinas Exhibition of U.S. Latinos and Latinas in World War II, September 2nd through, uh, October 31st. Thank you.
Thank you, Trustee Saldivar. Trustee Wilson?
Um, so like Trustee Maria stated, we were in Austin and, um, it was refreshing because we hadn't been going. And so this was kind of like our first time going and everybody was excited to hear that Lone Star was in the building because we are considered really the premier in Texas, right? And so everybody is really looking to us. Um, and that's the vibe that I got in the room, like, cause everybody was kind of sharing their numbers of enrollment and they were like, we already know y'all are up there, you know, so, um, just kind of like a badge of honor. But, um, like I was telling Chair Sullivan and, um, Trustee Maria, um, we're premier in our area. But my goal is to let us be premier nationally. You know what I mean? I want people to know that we are Lone Star. You know what I'm saying? Like, we are Lone Star. We are the college to go to. So, um, and I kind of pride myself on that. Um, but I just wanted, it was a really good, um, conference that we had and we learned a lot about what others are doing in Texas. Um, and it, and it, and it didn't like, oh, we're doing better than y'all. But it's like, everybody in their region has a reach in what they're doing, like what we're doing. Everybody's in the communities. And you, you saw that everything was community-oriented, community-focused. So I feel like as a whole in Texas, that, that's what the focus on the col- community colleges or colleges, we are focused on community, not just Lone Star. So we have to like, really like hone in to the community aspect of it. Um, because it's a lot of, lot of these colleges in Texas are, did some big, big deals, but they're focused on their students. And I think that's what's most important. So I had a good time.
Good. Thank you. And let me publicly, um, thank both you and Trustee Maria for taking time to attend. Uh, appreciate it because you're taking time away from work and family and responsibilities. So thank you for going and representing the board. And, um, I just reminded the chancellor that this participation is a direct result of his deciding to rejoin TAC, Texas Association of Community Colleges. So not only are we members, we're actually taking advantage of the benefits of the membership in a number of ways. So thank y'all for doing that. Uh, I have a board comment, but I'd like to, uh, check with Trustee Voe. Y'all good? Okay, thank you. And I'll close, uh, board comments and then we'll go to committee reports with a report on Lone Star College Foundation. They hosted their first quarterly board meeting of the year on September 18th and wanted to just share a couple of things. The meeting opened with Nicola Merritt. Nicola is a graduate of Lone Star College Kingwood's Respiratory Therapy Program and former Lone Star Foundation Scholarship recipient. She was the student speaker at the STAR Gala in 2024 and received the surprise transfer scholarship to University of Houston Downtown. She credits the college and the support that she has received for her part of her success. Nicola is on track to graduate in 2026 from University of Houston Downtown and has a 4.0 GPA. Her presentation was the perfect way to start a new year with Lone Star College Foundation Board. Another update that you may have heard about over the summer is Lone Star College Foundation is the recipient of a bequest from Nathaniel Emerson's estate. This former student, who was not seeking a degree, enjoyed his art classes so much that he left Lone Star College Montgomery Art Department in his will. And now a $1.5 million endowment is funded at the campus to benefit the art department. Thank you and thank everyone at the foundation and the board of directors for their hard work. We'll now move to the next item, which is, uh, board committee reports. And I'll call on, uh, each committee to give a report. Uh, Trustee Kane, I think you'll give a report for Audit and Finance.
Thank you. Uh, the Audit and Finance Committee met on September the 15th discussing two agenda items. The annual comprehensive financial report and the fiscal year 26 internal audit plan. Dr. VN will begin work on the annual comprehensive financial report on October 6th in collaboration with Forvis Mazers for submission to the state by December 31st. Forvis Mazars has asked to present their findings to the board in early December ahead of that state deadline. We then heard from Liz Myers, who is a partner at McConnell and Jones as well. as well as the system's acting chief audit executive. And she presented several areas of interest for the audit team in the coming year, including cybersecurity, regulatory changes and compliance, and artificial intelligence oversight. Chair Sullivan and I reviewed and approved the internal audit plan that Ms. Myers presented. The system has selected a new chief audit executive, Deanna Cashman, who is currently slated to begin on November the 4th.
Thank you, trustee Kane. Next committee is the Ad Hoc Committee on Policy Review. Trustee, or excuse me, committee chair Saldivar.
Thank you, chairman. The Policy Review Committee consists of Dr. Kane, trustee Mesa, and trustee Broussard, and obviously myself. The Policy Review Committee met on August 25th, 2025, and September 2nd to review several proposed policy changes. Today, there are three proposed policy changes that the PRC recommended for board review. First, in action item 10, is the annual review of the investment policy. No changes were proposed to the investment policy. Second, in action, is action item 11, I'm sorry. Action item 11, Chief Financial Officer Dr. Vian proposed changes to the purchasing policy to align it with recent legislation. And third, in action item 12, Chair Sullivan proposed an update to the policy that outlines succession when the presiding officer is absent. The Policy Review Committee will also be meeting soon to continue its work on more upcoming policy changes and proposals. I want to use this time to thank Nancy Molina and her team for always assisting us with this committee. Thank you so much.
Thank you, trustee Saldivar. Next committee is the Grievance Committee. Trustee Wilson? Okay, thank you. Next committee, Ad Hoc Committee on Committees. Trustee Kane?
No report.
Okay, thank you, sir. Next is Ad Hoc Committee, Community Engagement. Trustee Mesa?
No update at this time.
Thank you, sir. Last is the Technology Committee, committee chair now is trustee Mesa. Trustee Mesa?
Yes, I have a few updates to share, including accomplishments from the Office of Technology Services. Improvements to student experiences, including the STAR bundle, increased access and improved access, enhancements to the Student Assistant AI Chat Bot, which continues to exceed expectations, guest Wi-Fi, system-wide, and continued installation at different campuses, as well as deployment throughout the rest of the system. And different testing as it relates to cybersecurity, and that's all I have at this time. Thank you.
Thank you, trustee Mason. We'll now move to the next item of the agenda, consideration of the consent agenda. For this agenda, I'd like to pull action item three and action item four for separate consideration. Are there any other items to be pulled for discussion in separate considerations? Looking to my right, nothing. Looking to my left, nothing. Virtually. Trustee Stoma?
I have nothing. No.
Thank you. Item three has been pulled. May I have a motion to approve item three?
Mr. Chairman, may I be recognized?
Yes, I just caught my, my mistake. Thank you very much. We'll now, we will now consider action item three first. I, Chair Mike Sullivan, moved that the maintenance and operations portion of the property.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, ma'am.
We needed a vote on the consent agenda.
Thank you. I'm going too far forward. Okay, so now we'll do the consent agenda. No items have been pulled. Correct? So I now need a motion.
We pulled item three and four, so we need a motion for the remainder.
Okay, I'll get this right. Forgive me. All right, so items one, all items except items three and four, if I could get a motion.
So moved.
Thank you. So have motion by Dr. Kane. Thank you all for bailing me out on this. Do I have a second? Have a second by trustee Wilson. I'll do a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar? Thank you, trustee Wilson. Thank you, trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Maria. Thank you, trustee vote.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Kane.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Sullivan votes yes as well. The items pass unanimously. And now I can proceed. Okay, thank you. This is teamwork up here, and it's just a great example of how we all work well together. All right, we'll consider action item three first. I, Chair Mike Sullivan, moved that the maintenance and operation portion of the property tax rate be increased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.0785 per $100 of assessed valuation, which is effectively a 7.9% increase in the tax rate. May I have a second? Have a second by trustee Wilson. Is there any discussion? Looking down my left, trustee Maria, Kane, Mesa, Saldivar. Vote Wilson, Stoma. No discussion. Now do a roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar? Thank you, trustee Wilson. Thank you, trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Maria.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee vote.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Kane.
Yes.
Thank you, and Mike Sullivan votes yes. The item passes. We'll now consider action item four. I, Chair Mike Sullivan, moved that the interest in sinking portion of the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.0, excuse me, 0.0275 per $100 of assessed valuation, which is effectively an 8.64% decrease in the tax rate. Do I have a second? Have a second by trustee Wilson. Thank you. Is there any discussion? Looking down.
Mr. Chairman, can we go back to the motion? I'm so sorry. So it's a decrease in the interest in sinking portion of the fund, not the tax rate? Could we restate the motion?
Okay, may I reread it? Would that be the clearest thing to do? Okay, thank you. I, Chair Mike Sullivan, moved that the interest in sinking portion of the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.0275 per $100 of assessed valuation, which is effectively an 8.64% decrease in the tax rate.
In the interest in sinking portion of the tax rate?
Okay, forgive me, trustees. Just forgive me. I, Chair Mike Sullivan, moved that the interest in sinking portion of the property tax rate be decreased by the adoption of a tax rate of 0.0275 per $100 of assessed valuation, which is effectively an 8.64% decrease in the interest in sinking portion of the tax rate. Thank you, and thank you. Okay, do I have a second? Have a second by trustee Wilson. Is there any discussion? I'll look to my right and then to my left. Trustee vote?
No.
Trustee Wilson, trustee Maria, trustee Kane? Any comments, questions, discussion? Trustee Mesa, trustee Saldivar? Certainly none from me. And Chair Stoma, excuse me, trustee Stoma virtually. Any questions?
No, I don't. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I'll now move forward at the roll call vote. Trustee Saldivar?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Wilson. Thank you, trustee Broussard is absent. Trustee Stoma?
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Mesa.
Yes.
Thank you, trustee Maria.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee vote.
Aye.
Thank you, trustee Kane.
Yes.
Thank you, Mike Sullivan votes yes as well. The item passes. Now we can go to financial report. Okay, thank you. Next on our agenda is a financial report. Dr. Vian, if you please come forward.
Thank you so much, Chair and trustees. I'm trying to find a way to have Dr. Lambert assist me with financials, since he is the humorous portion. I need to borrow a couple of his jokes for the financials at times, so look forward to that. So looking in the financial report, you all should have a full packet and the information presented to you. Just a reminder for the chair and the board, that again, as we're presenting today, that this is the representation of the 12th month of a 12-month cycle. So what you're seeing here is ending August 31st, 2025. But encourage you to take into consideration that this is before full closeout of the month. We are still working through that process and will continue for a few more days into October. But as of this time, this is where we were for the closeout. So taking a look at our revenues, excited to present that we tracked exactly what we have been presenting. And so we're looking at 538.4 million in total revenue received through August. And then looking at expenditures, you can see that the total expenditures through 831 was 427.3 million. And this is just a breakdown of the various portions of that being salaries, employee benefits, services, professional development. So all of those items came in line with what was anticipated. And we were tracking the variance throughout the year, but they did land where we thought they would anticipate to land. Just another visual representation of the revenues. And so as you can see, the 538 million in actual revenues collected versus the 513 and what was budgeted, which does represent 104.9% representation of that. So a little bit close to 5% additional revenue received. We are still minus or lacking our last FAST funds payment. So that will continue to be represented in the financials. We are still anticipating an additional $1.13 million due from the state for FAST. So that will hopefully be received soon, but would not be represented in the numbers that you see here. When we're looking at expenditures, again, this continued to track throughout the year, that we did have a total of 427 million in expenditures or 87.1% of total budget allowable in expenditures. So as we close out, we'll continue to get closer to that number, but that is at this time where we were positioned. Taking a look at the financial statements, as you can see here, variances really now depict actuals. So throughout the year, we try to update you on anticipated variances. And as a reminder, variances are any items outside of what we projected in the budget. So none of those variances have actually become actuals. So again, budget minus year-to-date actuals is the variant. So you can see here, as represented in the other charts, we had an allocated budget of 513, 25 million in approximate variances for a total year-to-date actuals of $538 million. So looking at the financial statements as a representation of expenditures, again, just taking a look at the variance now that do depict actuals, you can see only still remaining of approximately 63 million in budgeted variances for that for a total expenditure year-to-date before closeout of $427 million. Taking a look at your additional packets and your information, you do have additional documents for the board's review. There have been no additional funds received for Harvey since the last report. But I did want to give a brief update on that, that we have an approximate 100,000 remaining from the FEMA for Harvey-related expenditures. Once we receive the reimbursement for that, we will feel confident that that would be the last of the dollars that we would receive and therefore be the last report that we would provide. So I will continue to keep the board posted on that. But there is approximately about 100,000 in receivables left. And after that time, we would not be showing that as an item for our financials. And then again, as you look at cash reserves, again, as you look, this was just closeout for FY '25, approximately 169 million in cash reserves. And we do anticipate that item growing as we start to report the FY '26 cash reserve balance. Happy to entertain any questions that the board or the chancellor may have.
I have one question, but I'll poll trustees first. Any questions down to this end? Trustee vote to Wilson? Thank you, trustee Maria, Kane, Mesa, Saldivar. Now, could you go back to slide 21, please, ma'am? Couldn't help but notice the investments. 417% increase and then 1732% increase. Could you talk about that?
Yes, so that was an increase over what was actual budget for the previous year. So if you remember, we have previously only been budgeting $1 million for actual budget prior to the FY '25 year. It was under the notion that we did not want to actually count on that, because as we know, interest rates can vary and change. And so when we look at it, what was actually received was a great deal more for that. But what they were only budgeting was 1 million. So in this year, we budgeted 5 million and received 15 million. So as you're looking at it, it's a prior year percentage of the budget, not of actuals.
Okay, philosophically going forward, will you use the same process to make your budget projection?
No, sir. This year, we actually did include a much greater amount for investments as a representation of budget, but chose as a philosophy to actually hold that money until it was actually earned to, to prepare for any change in interest rates. Meaning, we won't actually allocate it out to the system until the interest is actually earned on interest. And I believe it was approximately 15 million that we allocated for investments for FY '26.
Okay, good. Thank you very much.
Yes, sir.
No other questions? All right, next item is closed session, but I do want to let trustees, okay, certainly, chancellor.
So Dr. Vian, will you go back a few slides for me? I want to make sure. So as the board is aware, I just emailed you.
Where did you?
That one right there. The draft, new strategic plan. So part of that is economic resiliency and economic self-sufficiency. And so will you go back one more for me, Dr. Vian?
Yes, sir.
So one of the things that I want to highlight for you over the last couple of years is we are actually getting higher revenue than what we projected. Correct, Dr. Vian?
Yes.
And then if you go to the next slide, we're, we're also spending less than we really have in quite some time as a percentage of the total budget.
Yes, sir.
So that's not an accident. That's a lot of very hard work by a lot of people aboard. And I wanted to sort of stop to sort of highlight that. Because along with lowering the tax rate, paying off debt faster than we had planned, not raising tuition for students, giving every single employee a cost of living adjustment, giving the bottom 500 earning employees at this institution an additional raise. We're also managing to be excellent fiscal stewards. And I wanted to make sure that I thank your staff and I thank all of the presidents and all of the vice chancellors publicly in front of the board, because it really is a group effort. And so we have, again, higher success rates, higher retention rates, record enrollments. We're taking care of our employees and we're being better fiscal stewards. And I think that that's worthy of mentioning and interrupting the meeting chairs. So thank you for indulging me. And when we talk about doing the thing, this is doing the thing. So thank you.
Sure. Well, thank you, chancellor, and appreciate you making it, bringing it to our attention, because it has to be intentional. It does not happen on its own. So thank you for leading us there. Thank you, Dr. Vian, as well for your part in it. Keep up the good work. So Ms. Barnett handed out the Audit and Finance Committee charge. It's in this blue folder. You may look at it at your leisure. We're going to go into closed session, but trustees, secretary, board secretary Wilson and I have to sign some documents related to some action taken. So there'll be about a 10-minute delay in the start of closed session. Out of respect for your time, we want you to know where we're going to be and what we're doing. The Board of Trustees, in accordance with the Texas Opens Meeting, Open Meetings Act, will move into closed session under one or more of the following provisions. Section 551.071, section 551.072, section 551.074, and section 551.076. We'll now move to closed session at 11:54 a.m. will now move to closed session at eleven fifty four a.m. I reconvene this board meeting at one fourteen p.m. Next item, suggested future agenda items, any suggested future agenda items, next item adjournment with no further business to discuss. This board meeting is now adjourned at one fourteen, one fifteen p.m. Thank you. My apologies, Chancellor wanted to be recognized. Are we still recording? Good.
I'm so sorry. I did want to mention to the board that our chief of staff is on vacation and Ms. Elliott filled in for him, and so I wanted to publicly acknowledge her contributions to this meeting. And as seamless as it was, it's a lot of work, and so for her to take it up on short notice like that to help a colleague out is very commendable. So I wanted to recognize her in front of the board.
Yeah. Thank you very much.